Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Peretzky. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Today is December 3rd, 2024. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29th, 2023. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Harry Martinick?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
Is anyone else here tonight, do you know, from staff?
No.
No. Okay. The Chair will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond in the comments of others, to the comments of others, do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. It is now 6:04 PM. And first on the agenda is the continuation of the consideration of the application submitted by BD Homes for special permits for two family dwelling in Residential C and Groundwater Protection Overlay 2, 343 Hudson Street, MAP 30, Parcel 18. Okay, and who do we have tonight for the applicant?
Vito Colono with Connor Stone Engineering. And I think Bruno is also on the line. I think that's all we have, though, tonight.
Okay. All right. We left off, I don't know if you want to present, or we can talk about the outstanding items that we left off with?
Sure, let me just get my screen up. So, yeah, there was a few outstanding items with the site plans. There were, I think, four items remaining that we needed to update the plans on. One of them was right at the intersection with Overlook Park. Just to add in, vertical granite curbing, right on this corner, right through there. So we added that on there. We also added in a planting setback line. So just an even 20-foot offset off the front property line, just to make sure nothing's in there, keep that sight line open. We pulled back the fence up in this corner. I think there was a little concern last time if these two driveways were both coming down. It's not really the street, but the two driveways. They want to be able to see each other. So we pulled that back from, it was up to the property line, and we went back to about, I think, 10 feet off. And then we also added a note per DPW that the sewer line, video inspected prior to construction with the, you know, coordination with them, results provided to them, just to verify that connection is still good. I think that's all we had on the site plans themselves. And I'm not sure, I thought Dave might have provided some information on the legend. I think that was one of the questions last time. Lori, I'm not sure if he provided that to you or not. Can't remember.
Yes, we did receive a couple of emails. They were forwarded by Attorney Pember. One had to do with the English names for three of the specific plants, trees. And then another one had to do with the headings. So there was H, and then there was also, I believe, the other one was S. So there was a lack of understanding of what those meant. So he explained that the H meant height at maturity, and the S meant spread at maturity. So I did send a follow-up question asking what would be the size at planting, but I wasn't able to receive an answer in time for tonight's meeting. So I did add a condition of approval that said it's letter I. All trees shall be a minimum of six feet tall or two-inch caliper at time of planting.
Okay.
I was wondering, is there any way we can update that spreadsheet to just add what the H and the S means? Just because years from now, someone looks at it and says, what does that mean? You know, no one's gonna know.
Yeah, I would think you should be able to do that, update that spreadsheet. So, that can be something that we could provide before issuing to the permit or something like that before, you know, as a condition of approval or something like that.
Right. I think, Lori, you had a condition where it stated all the dates have to be the same. Maybe there could be something that stated, I think I wrote it down, that all dates are the same and, you know, even for the planting plan should have a date on it and the legend on the plant list.
Sure, I can add a, I can add a sentence to that condition C that says the planting plan legend shall be updated. Did you want it to include those English names? Or just the headings?
It's up to you. If it makes it easier for you, then they can just cut and paste the English names on there.
I'm fine with just updating the headings, because I could always look those up online, which is what I had done.
Okay, so they can add the headings and maybe add a date to the plan and date to their list.
Sure.
Okay. Those are the items I actually had on my list. Did you have any other items, Lori, on your list?
No, I thought that they did a good job updating the plans to reflect some of the outstanding issues that were in my review letter and that we had discussed at the last meeting. So if there were any further concerns, I included them as conditions of approval, like one of your comments that you made last time, I included as Condition K, conversion of the heating system to oil is prohibited. Of course, the DPW wanted conditions regarding the Betterman fees and inspections. I did include under letter S substantial modifications. I got that from the decision on the duplex that was approved at, I believe it was 87 Hudson Street. That was a condition that we included. So since you wanted it then for duplex, I figured you'd want it again for this duplex. So that's reflected here.
I was wondering on Q, where the deed has to define the responsibility for maintaining the drainage system. Should it also state the no oil heat and the 20-foot setback? Only because, once the buildings are built and they're sold, the deed goes with the property, but no owners in the future are ever going to go back and read the conditions once it's built.
Well, they should, because they are required to record this decision. So this decision will have a marginal reference on the deeds. So it should be very easy to pull up this decision. And a lot, a lot of these conditions are in perpetuity. So we want to make sure that this decision is recorded. So I don't know it kind of be an odd thing to add to a deed with regards to the heating oil. So I, I think if we cover it in this decision, that should be adequate.
Okay. I guess most houses don't have decisions, so I didn't know if they would see the decision when they bought their house. But it sounds like they will. Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Oh, Bill?
Yep. Lori, I thought when we did 73 Hudson Street, we had a condition in there about the Homeowners Association and having that information recorded so that we knew who to go to if there was a question about something like, you know, planting within 20 feet of the roadway or something. But I don't see that condition here.
So if these units are sold, so there, it could be a couple of different ways. So one person could own the property, the structure, in which case that person would be responsible for the maintenance. Or it could be condoized. So not clear at this point. It could change at points in the future. If you want to add a condition like that, we can. But I would put the caveat in there that if the units are sold separately, because obviously if there's one owner, there's no need to do a condo association.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if we want to put something in there about if or not. What does everyone else think?
I think it makes sense, because I was thinking the same thing. Because then we do that for common driveways, too.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other comments? Okay, if nobody has comments, we can open it up to public comments, if there are any public comments. Since this is my first time sharing with public comments, I don't know how to see if anyone's raising their hand. I guess I can look at attendees, right? I see three attendees, but I don't see anyone raising their hand if. Lori, do you see any?
I do not.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't miss anyone. All right. Does the applicant have anything else they want to add before we close the hearing?
Uh, no, nothing from me.
Okay, border staff, anything to add before we close?
Do not.
Not for me.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Harry Martinick?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So now that the hearing is closed, we should discuss, we'll discuss if anyone has anything that they want to discuss, or we can discuss the conditions of, that we've all seen. Did everybody have a chance to see the conditions that were sent out?
Lori, is that what came out later today, or did that come out earlier?
I emailed it yesterday morning.
At 9:46 AM.
I can pull it up if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great, because I'm not sure I got it.
Okay.
Well, I think I got it, but I don't think I saw it.
Let me share my screen one moment.
Condition I wanted to mention was B, it talks about the hours of operation related to construction. And we said only site work. But this isn't the warehouse, that was for the warehouse, but this is a residential building with neighbors next door. So I was wondering if we could, in the parentheses, write outdoor construction and site work. Because if they're building the house and they're like, have mail guns outside on the weekends or holidays, I don't think we'd want that. We just wanted to say that if it was indoor work, then it wouldn't be a big deal on a Sunday or holiday. So I was just thinking for B, you could add outdoor construction and site work only. I don't know what others think of that.
Again, I think that makes sense because of the area that it's in.
It's reasonable.
Hmm.
Yep.
And then the next one down, C, Lori was updating to include the S and the H, like we discussed and the legend.
Oh, you add that sentence at the end?
Um, yeah, at the end of C. And then the only other addition I had was down on T2, it's at the very end. And went back and reviewed Fred's letter and Josh's letters. And Josh had that certification by an expert that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded to the point whereby a hazard to the public or ecological damage results. And that's from our groundwater bylaws that the groundwater committee and Fred used to have a certification by an expert, which would probably be the engineer, that the quality and supply of the water would not be degraded. But
Yeah, I don't have a T, I have S. Is it S or T?
Mine goes to T.
You might have an earlier version, Anthony. So I updated the decision. Let me, let me scroll down. I updated the decision to reflect the comments that I received from Josh.
Okay.
So I sent you a revised version.
T2, I was gonna add his comment, because if we go through the groundwater criteria, one of them is that there needs to be analysis by a technically qualified expert certifying that it will not be degraded to the point whereby a hazard to public health or ecological damage exists. And I'm sure this won't, this doesn't have any hazardous chemicals or waste, but it's something that's called for in our bylaws.
All right, I can add that.
Yeah, that's something Fred used to have us, ask us to do at the end. So we used to do that certification.
Yep. Okay, so actually, I don't know if anybody else had anything to add, or we could go through the criteria and see if there's anything that you wanted to add.
Lori, we're adding a U on here, right, for the if there's a homeowners association?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Be good to know for the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna, if anyone, if no one has anything to add, I was gonna go through the criteria for the groundwater. So for groundwater special permit, we have to make sure that it finds that the proposed use meets the purpose and intent of this chapter and will not derogate from the purpose of the groundwater protection overlay districts. We also have to find it will not during construction or thereafter impair ambient groundwater quality or reduce existing recharge capacity beyond that allowed for this chapter, which Josh concluded that it didn't go above the 15% and that it meant that. It will not adversely affect the quality or yield of an existing or potential water supply, which the engineers are gonna certify with that condition. So does everybody feel that it meets the three criteria for the groundwater, too?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go through all the criteria and then we can go back and we'll have one motion for all of the special permits. So the next one is for the special permit for the duplex. And I have the criteria here. It's also on page 713. So there are six criteria. And number one is, do I have to read them all? Does everybody want me to read them all? I guess I could. It's substantial harmony with the master plan and other plans. The proposed site is an appropriate location for such use.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. I think because the ZBA approved the size of the lot, it was up to the ZBA to determine that the use was allowed on that size lot. So they did that. Number three, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. I think, in my opinion, with the building being pushed back further on the lot, it actually gives that curve better site distance. And Josh, the engineer for the town, also said by moving the site back, it was, it would be actually an improvement to that curve. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided and for the proper operation of the proposed use.
Yep.
Yep. And the proposed use will conform to any special requirements of the Special Permanent Granting Authority as stated in its decision.
Yep.
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 And the proposal could not be reasonably altered to reduce adverse impacts on the natural environment to be compatible with historic development patterns or to preserve historically significant buildings.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. I think that makes sense, like it's not historically significant building right now. It is 1800s, but it's dilapidated.
Did you read four?
Well, maybe, did I miss it?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Right.
And I think with the building setback further, that'll solve that problem. And the 20-foot setback for all sorts of landscaping. One thing I did want to state tonight before we have the final motion, and I'm still gonna go through the special permit for the site plan, is that, in my opinion, like, I do think that having the building pushed back definitely made it safer, as it improved the site distance. And I also feel that the duplex fits in that location, because it's surrounded by other duplexes and multifamily homes. But I also want to state that I don't want this duplex to be a precedence, because they stated that that it's a dilapidated house. So, you know, they want to make it nicer, which they are gonna make it nicer, but a dilapidated building is not criteria for duplex. And so I definitely want to make sure that this, at least in my mind, isn't the criteria I'm using to, if I, if I do vote to approve it, it wouldn't be because it's a dilapidated building. I don't want people to buy properties and let the building go into disrepair and think that's an easy pass to get a duplex or multifamily. But I do think the location and making it safer on that corner would be reasons why I think it's, you know, would be approved, in my opinion. Sorry, I just wanted to say that, because I don't, I don't want a lot of people coming in with dilapidated buildings and wanting to do higher density for that reason. Now I'll go down the decision criteria for our site plan. Number one, the Board finds that the site plan meets all applicable requirements of this bylaw, which we did. Given the location type and extent of land use proposed by the permit, the design of the building, building location, egress points, grading and other elements, this site plan cannot be reasonably altered to, number one, reduce clearing and grading on the site, reduce the volume of cotton fill, number of removed trees, and the extent of the stormwater flow increase from the site, soil erosion, or threat of air or water pollution. I think it met that. Josh said that they were gonna meet all the stormwater requirements. Number two, reduce the risk of groundwater contamination from onsite wastewater disposal systems. This is gonna be on public water and sewer. And there are no hazardous materials on site, so I don't think there'll be contaminating water that way. Number three, improve pedestrian, bicycle or vehicle or safety, both onsite and egressing from it. Do you guys agree?
Yep.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Improve access to each structure for fire and other emergency service equipment.
Yep.
Yep. We did get a letter from the fire chief and Lori included his conditions into the decision. Reduce visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage or other outdoors areas viewed from the public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. Well, the parking's on the phone, but I think the applicant did a good job of making the duplex look nice visually. Number six, achieve greater consistency and compatibility with the surrounding area as to building design or scale or site design.
Yep.
Yep. Yep, there are other duplexes and multifamily in the area. Seven, reduce glare from headlights, reduce light trespass from luminaries onto adjacent lots of the street or light overspill into the night sky.
Yes.
Yep. They did send information saying they're dark sky compliant, so that should help that. Number eight, avoid the removal or disruption of historic, traditional or significant structures or architectural elements. There's nothing historical there.
Yeah.
And nine, reduce obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. There really isn't a scenic view there. And C says, any variances required from the zoning board of appeals have been granted, and they have. One thing I forgot to do is, they also need a waiver from the photometric plan. And since it's a residential home using dark sky compliant lights, I'm okay with granting that waiver. What is the Board, does the Board agree?
Yep.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Okay, I should probably take an official vote. So I'm gonna take a roll call vote to grant the waiver from the photometric plan.
I think we need to do a motion first, right?
Yeah. Okay, sorry. I thought we had to do the waiver first.
Yep.
Okay, so I went through all the criteria for all three permits and so do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant a waiver from Planning Board Rule Section 7.2C18, a requirement to submit a photometric plan.
Do you have a second? Oh, Millie's seconds?
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Harry Martinick?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Amy Peretzky's an aye. So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit per Section 7-05-030, Table 1, Part A, two-family dwelling, a special permit with site plan approval per Section 7-03-050A2, a special permit per Section 7-07-010D3B2 to allow the proposed two-family dwelling on the subject property located at 343 Hudson Street, MAP 30, Parcel 18, subject to finding of fact 1-1 through 18, and Conditions A through U.
Do you have a second?
Again.
Okay, Bill motioned and Anthony second. Roll call vote. Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Harry Martinick?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
And I'm an I. So congratulations.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, you too.
Okay, it's now six thirty-two. Second on our agenda is A and R's block releases and bonds. Do we have any of those, Lori?
I do not.
Thank you very much. I appreciate.
Oh, you're welcome. Thanks. Good luck.
I was late. There was an accident before me before getting to Mill for so that's why I was like ten minutes away, but I got in time.
Okay, well, good luck.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from October fifteenth. Did anybody have any changes to the minutes? No, I didn't either. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four? Second? Okay, um, roll call vote. Bill Pierce? Millie Milton? Anthony Zaitin? Carrie Martinak? And I'm an I. Those um minutes are approved. Okay, so the next on the agenda is discussion of bylaws for annual town meeting twenty twenty-five. And I think we're gonna bump those to the next meeting.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, it was a very, very busy month for me uh with both the planning board and the Z B A, so I didn't get as far with the zoning bylaw changes as I had hoped, but I'm uh pretty far along with the inclusionary bylaw at this point. Um, so I definitely will have that ready to go at our next meeting, so I'll I'll try and send that out to you folks uh the Friday before the Tuesday meeting, so you can chew on it over the weekend. If not earlier than that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, next on the agenda are subcommittee updates. Does anybody have any subcommittee updates?
Um, open space, um, this quick meeting. Uh, we put a request into the CPC for two hundred thousand dollars, um, not targeted really for anything at this point. Um, currently have sixty thousand dollars on hand. Uh, talked about four thirty-two Whitney and its usability for trails and other things. Brian said they they've been out there, they've looked at it. Um, there's still quite a bit of debris, whether it's pallets, um, barbed wire and things that do need to be cleaned up, so there's some coordination to get that done. Uh, and there's one particular property that we have approvals to do proposals on uh in town, um, which I don't think we're supposed to talk about just yet, but um, and that's about it.
Thanks. It's all good stuff. Anybody else?
Yep, I have one. Um, so yesterday at the select board meeting, they approved a um heavy vehicle exclusion for Summer Street, um, which will force um vehicles um over two and a half tons either to, if they're coming up one thirty-five, to either Brigham Street or to the center of town. So um, that's gonna be submitted to the um to the state. If the state approves it, then it goes back to the select board for their their final approval. Um, so that's in process. And then uh we are gonna be doing a survey from the uh traffic safety committee. Um, so there are eighty-five communities right now that have a default speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour instead of thirty. And uh so we're gonna perform a survey to see if the residents are interested in in moving our speed limit down.
Well, that's great. Has the police chief weighed in on that? Like, what does he think?
He's okay with it. I think they're more enforcement than, you know, what the actual speed limits are. So he he's more concerned from the enforcement side, uh which at that point, it doesn't matter whether it's thirty or twenty-five, right? They still have to enforce whatever the law is, so. But hopefully it it will get people to to start slowing down in town. And like I said, you know, there's already eighty-five towns that have done this, including Boston and Worcester.
Davis Street is tricky cuz it goes from twenty-five to thirty-five to twenty-five, but we already have twenty-five on the curves and then the narrow areas.
Yeah, and this will only be places where s- where s- uh, speed limits already are not posted. So if they're posted, then it's what they're posted to, but if they're not posted in either Thickeley Settled or Business District, then they're by default twenty-five instead of thirty.
That's great. And I think the truck exclusion makes sense on Summer Street. That's a pretty narrow street. I can't imagine two trucks trying to pass each other there. Especially down by um where it comes out across some Harvey, it gets really narrow.
Yeah, and there's a stone wall at one po- point as well that, you know, sort of makes it feel like it's narrower. So, you know, there's that concern as well.
Alright, thanks. I have um design review. We have design review next week. We've been working on updating the design review guidelines to meet some of the recent changes with the bylaws, just to update them. And then we're gonna have a last discussion about the sign bylaw. We haven't made any changes since last year. We're just gonna go through it one last time. And then we'll bring it forward to you guys for the seventeenth. But right now, it's pretty much the same that we were gonna bring forward for business districts last year, but we pushed off till this year. We might actually remove a couple of things from it, so. Um, we're gonna discuss that next week. And I also had M P I C and we were talking about downtown revitalization and yeah, and ideas for um Gary Phillips does a lot of um native plants and he might do some more areas downtown for us. And the economic development forum is next week on the eleventh, uh seven P M at the senior center?
Yes, and uh actually, if I could make a plug, um, so uh last week I sent out a link uh to a survey that C M R P C is hosting um for all of the various board members. So of course, there are seventeen of you in all. And so far, only five people have responded to the survey. So the responses to the survey are gonna kinda kick off the um, the discussion at the economic development forum. So it's really important for everybody to fill out the survey, so I had requested that folks do that uh by tomorrow evening. Um, so that would give C M R P C time to to digest the responses and uh analyze them. So I will send out the link again. Um, but if you folks could, uh, it it should be relatively quick. There's only eleven questions. So I can't imagine it would take more than, say, ten minutes at the absolute most to fill out the questions. And it goes into Survey Monkey, so um, i- it should be easy if you have a computer.
I didn't see the link. I missed it. And I was talking to someone today too, and I said it's a week till the economic development forum. I'm surprised we didn't get the survey yet. So that person had missed it too.
Well, you know, I sent it out, uh, I think it was either the Tuesday or the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So it may have just got lost in the holiday clutter, so absolutely, I'll send that out again uh tonight before I s- I uh turn off my computer.
That's great. Thanks, cuz I was wondering about it. Um, anybody else have any comments about subcommittees?
I have some uh updates from CPC. Some of the uh applications have come in. Um, we actually don't have as many yet. I think when we had our last meeting, they hadn't quite finished the deadline, so I don't know if we have any more coming in. Um, but we have, uh, I think, um, Anthony had mentioned the um conservation fund. Is that the one you were talking about? Okay, so we have that in front of us that we'll be uh investigating, hopefully a little bit more in depth tomorrow. Thursday, I'm getting my days mixed up. Um, and then we have a uh, an affordable housing application that is hopefully gonna give us a fourteen unit um proposal for that. Uh, on Boundary Street, we have a White Cliffs um proposal for uh doing an architectural plan for the demolition of some of the newer additions that were added on. And then we also have a proposal for application for a monument for Northborough Revolutionary War so- soldiers, so um, kinda runs the gamut on things.
And today, there was a new submission from uh the D P W for uh carrying costs uh for White Cliffs. So uh Millie, check your email that was just sent out today. It was received this morning, so it's a a last minute uh addition.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
So Millie, I have a question for you. Uh, a few days ago, we received an email from Norm. I I'm not sure, did the whole board receive that? It was to some of his concerns, Lori. I know you were on it, Millie. I I caught you as well. But is that something you talked about as a historical um commission? Or I I think he signed it both from Historical Society and Commission. I'm just wondering if you had um any information on that, or if you could just shed some light on if there was a discussion at a meeting, or just Norm was just sharing some of his thoughts.
We had not had a discussion on that. I can't remember what the details were. I kinda glanced over it. Um, but it hadn't come up for discussion yet.
Okay, did the rest of the board receive a message from Norm the other day? Okay, so he had sent a message and of course, we can um forward it. Um, and then I
Oh, you're muted. Carrie, we lost you. Still, still gone.
Lori, did you get the email?
You know, I'm gonna search for it. He sends me lots of emails, so um I'm gonna find which one she's referencing, so just uh give me a minute.
Yeah, I thought it was about the, it was about the Native American.
Oh, yes, yes. You know, I can forward that to you right now to everybody.
And that was from the no- of the Historical Society.
Oh, okay. Can you guys hear me again? Sorry about that. Yeah, so anyway, um, if it's just something, so he had asked the planning board to consider an archaeological evaluation for certain areas of Northborough where there may be native trails. And in retrospect, we have um built over some of those trails and some of our other developments, so would we consider um including in our planning process um that kind of evaluation? And I I wonder if it's better to come to the board as a a recommendation from the Historical Commission. Or is that the, do you sit on that, Millie? Is that the message you could bring back? Or maybe we could just follow up with Norm?
Well, he's he's writing as a, uh, I mean, I could bring that forth to the Historical District Commission.
Okay, sorry, am I saying the wrong title for that? I'm just wondering if it comes from a town committee, if it's something like a memo that just maybe has requested that we take a look into that, if we want to. I guess if Lori is able to send that message to everyone, everyone can review and sort of get some context here. I mean, I'm sure it sounds a little out of context for everyone.
I I know for me, um, so, you know, historically, in in my past positions, um, if the Historic Society or Historic District Commission provided the heads up to the planning board that there was something um on the site, cuz sometimes artifacts are kept kept confidential because um people don't want them to be disturbed. So I think it would be hopeful um to uh to get a ping from the Historic District Commission or the Historical Society whenever there is a development proposal um on one of those uh key parcels of land where something could be found. There wa- there was one property in Milbury that I was aware of where it was a uh historic mill site that was very important to the historic development of the community. And uh they were going to be building a uh bank on the property um as well as renovating an existing uh V F W. And so as part of that decision, the planning board required uh um an archaeologist to be present when excavating activities were occurring. So that way, if, when uh if something was found, um, they'd be able to identify it as being significant and ensure that it was preserved. And they did end up finding um some uh stones from the uh historic mill, and those are now on display at the site with a like a little monuments explaining what they are. So that would be a suggestion that I would have uh from, for the planning board, as well as the Historic District Commission and the Historical Society.
I mean, one of the things that we've run into is that we don't necessarily know where the archaeological sites might be because that's also something that isn't really uh available to the public. So unless they find it in their their process, we may never know anything. And the likelihood of it being reported when they find it is probably not very high.
So I was thinking, I was just thinking at the warehouse, if they come across like a di- wasn't there a mastodon or some big dinosaur found in Northborough? But if they found a dinosaur or something, they're not gonna wanna say anything because it will stop. It'll stop the construction and it's traps.
So unless we know that there's something or believe that there strongly and can prove that there's something likely, you know, imposing, I think, a, an archaeological or um, you know, expert on site while they're digging is probably not gonna be something we can do.
Be norm in the historical district knows certain locations that they could know, that they could tell us.
They they, it's very, many of these things are kept very, very discreet cuz what they don't want is then people publicly going and searching for things. So it's it's a very, uh, there's, there's a high level of um, you know, uh, confidence in that.
Well, it's kinda a chicken or egg thing. If nobody knows where they are, because then how can you protect them?
The state knows. There are people in the state that do know, but they're 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 n- not um that eager to give the information out.
You would think they'd give it to someone in the town, like one person should know.
And I think that's something that we have investigated and and may still be in the process of getting a little bit further on, but I I there may be somebody on the district commission, it certainly isn't me, that has that information. But I know it's something we have spent some time to discuss to, cuz I feel the same way is if you don't know where it is, how are you gonna know what you need to protect?
I'm gonna change the subject a little bit here, Millie. Um, the the um building that they're doing or proposing on Boundary Street, where is that? There's a little bit of confusion on where in relation to the dog park, is that?
So it's the complete opposite location of the dog park. Um, so I can uh
If you could pull that up, Lori, that'd be great.
I was just, I I know that I I've heard a couple of people concerned because the um, the parking there for that trailhead is supposed to be the overflow for the dog park.
Um, yeah, it's it's quite several hundred feet the, to the east. So there are um yeah, I can't pull it up that quick. Um, there are different locations where that that town-owned parcel of land juts out onto Boundary Street. Um, so the biggest uh area frontage is where the dog park is. And then there's um two, there's a duplex that's owned by the Housing Authority. And then there's um a little uh area frontage on Boundary Street. And then there are two other duplexes that are owned by or were Habitat for Humanity houses, um, and then there's another area houses. Um, and then there's another area of frontage on Boundary Street. And then there's like a little cul-de-sac um with, I think, maybe three or four homes on it. So that is the area. So it'd be in between that cul-de-sac and the Habitat for Humanity duplex where they're proposing to put um this affordable development, so uh it's it's kind of mushy at this point, how many units uh they'd propose, because of course, um, if the town agrees to to put it out uh to give it for affordable housing purposes, then we have to put it out to bid. So Habitat for Humanity might not actually get the property. Um, so there could be a variance in what uh whoever is awarded the property wants to do versus what Habitat wants to do, and what Habitat wanted to do is uh three duplex buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had one thing I wanted to bring up that um was actually have to do with the decision that we just approved, but it's a finding of fact, so it's not a change of any of the conditions. And it was just a date that was wrong, Lori, and I could tell you after the meeting, but it was just number six. The Planning Director questions, comments, and recommendations. It says November eighth, and that is the date that it says online, but if you read your actual comments and uh recommendations, it's dated September twentieth and November nineteenth. So it's just a date change. It was just, yeah.
Okay, I'll double check that.
Okay.
I probably have it in my file right here.
Amy, how do you find that stuff?
Well, for the meeting, I start going through the checklist, and I check all of this stuff on the findings of fact and exhibits. But, I mean, sometimes, yeah. Sometimes I catch on.
Actually, it does say November eighth.
The one I have says September twentieth and November nineteenth.
Oh, no, no, that's the date that the application was submitted by the applicant, and then the public hearing was scheduled on November nineteenth.
Okay.
So the the date of the actual document is November eighth.
Okay, it doesn't say that on my document. I guess it does on the very bottom.
Yep, that's that's where I put it.
Okay. All right, that was the only thing I wanted to ask about. Okay, does anybody have anything else they want to discuss for tonight? Nope. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Carrie Martnik?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thanks, everybody. See you on the, well, next week on the eleventh.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
It's Senior Center in person.
Survey.
Seven P M.
Got it.
Will it be taped?
Yes, it will be taped. Uh, so it's not going to be live, of course, um, but it will be uh put on cable.
Lauren, you're good.
Sorry, you're you're going to resend the survey link?
I am. I'm going to do it right now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for giving me that heads up on that.